So, we will call the meeting to order and we'll do roll call. Tony Corby?
Here.
Bruce Rabelin?
Here.
Emily McGonigal? Uh, no, she's not. Roxanne Sosiddeach? Here. Joanne Smith?
Here.
Jennifer Windows?
Here.
Okay. And all rise for the flag.
And we skipped Ted. Ted is online. He can participate, just everyone keep in mind his vote can't be counted because we didn't publicize it. Um, so I'm just making a note, he's remote or online.
Right, okay. Okay.
Mitch Erickson is on as well.
Oh, Mitch Erickson?
Yep, I'm here.
Howdy Mitch. Okay. And do I say your name?
You said, yep.
Gavin Grover, are you here?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll rise for the flag. Please, Jen. And now we will...oh, all those in favor?
Is there any discussion? I'm just typically, I don't have anything to add or, you know, comments, but...
Okay, any discussion done? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? My conspiracy. And now we will move to open forum and we will have the Elks' Student of the Month. Okay.
I'm going to give you this. Just want to stand someone here. Colton Schultz is one of the Elks Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for January. Colton is the son of Rebecca and Steve Schultz. While at Falls High School, Colton has played hockey, golf, band, participates in, on the Bronco Bass Fishing Club, and student angler, angler tournament trail, and is a member of the Minnesota Owners Society. He has pushed himself by taking math, history, and English, college and school courses the last two years. Mrs. Olson Line writes, "Colton's academic accomplishments are rivaled only by his personal strengths. His enthusiasm, respectfulness, and determination are beyond his years. He is well-loved by his peers, as well as all those who have had the pleasure of teaching him. Colton works hard and carries himself in a polite respectable manner. He is exceptionally gifted at making others feel comfortable and always maintains a positive attitude, no matter what is going on around him. Outside of school, Colton enjoys being with family and friends in the outdoors, doing things such as fishing, hunting, four-wheeling, snowmobiling, and camping. He plans to attend college and pursue a degree in electrical engineering. Colton Schultz, January, Elks Lodge 1599, Student of the Month."
Perfect. Okay.
Gavin?
Gavin Bacon?
Yeah. Gavin Bacon is one of the Elks Lodge 1599 Students of the Month for January. Gavin is the son of Leah and Chad Bacon. He participates on the Falls Trap Team and really enjoys that activity. Gavin has been a part of the Trap Team since sixth grade. Gavin has taken most of the industrial technology department courses, from engineering, to woods, to metals, to welding. Gavin seems to have found his passion in the industrial trades wing of the building. Outside of school, Gavin enjoys hunting, fishing, riding ATV, and snowmobile, along with hanging out with family. Mrs. Rudolph wrote, "Gavin has always been a great student. He always works hard and also advocates for himself if he needs help. His work, oh, his work is always thorough and he really takes pride in his work. He has been a joy to have as a student. Following high school, Gavin plans on going to Northwest Technical College to become certified as an electrician. Gavin Bacon, January, Elks Lodge 1599, Student of the Month."
Mitch Erickson, student representative, wants to do, uh, talk next while the pictures are taken. Would you like to do that Mitch?
It doesn't matter to me.
Go ready. Oops. Go ready Gavin.
Okay, alright, so, I can't turn on my camera, but, uh, I guess you just have to hear me. Alright, we, Student Council right now is planning, uh, Student Council right now is planning Winter Sports Week. Uh, that's gonna, that's happening this week. And we're planning the pep fest to be this Friday, the 21st, during Seventh Hour. So, and we're only having grades 11 through 12th grade in the gym there. That'll be during Seventh Hour. And we have a food drive happening next week, January 24th through the 28th. And that'll be open to all first hour classes. It'll be kind of a competition going around. And then, we will also be having our Valentine's Day Rose Sale, happening, uh, the week before Valentine's, because that'll be on the Monday, the 14th. So, that'll be open probably most of the week, and we'll be selling roses and we deliver them to everyone's first hour classes. Uh, blood drive, that'll be coming up in March. I'll touch on that at the next meeting. But, uh, that's pretty much what the Student Council's been up to. Any questions or comments?
Yes, not...okay, thank you Mitch. And now that we're done with that, then we'll resume our meeting. Now, public open forum, is there anybody? Nobody?
There's no one here.
We're all gone. Okey dokey. Now, we will move to the audit presentation.
Stacey, do you want to introduce Mary? Welcome, Mary.
Yes, I can. Um, okay, so, we're gonna do the audit presentation. Um, I'll let Mary introduce herself in just a moment. I think, for those of you who've been around, Mary's been our auditor, lead auditor, principal auditor for several years. Um, I need to share my screen.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. Um, kind of enjoy the ability to be a little bit remote, seeing how I'm, um, a little bit south than I fall, so thank you for allowing me to do it via Zoom. Um, tonight, again, Kevin should be dropping off the hard copies, but, um, in front of you, you have the bound audit report and then the PowerPoint. Um, I do go through just the PowerPoint, a little bit easier to go through, and then it, it has graphs, so you can kind of see, um, where the district is and where it has been in the past and do a little bit of that summary items. Um, it is open dialogue, so feel free to stop me at any time. Um, I'll try to take short pauses so that if anybody has questions, they can certainly jump in. It can be interactive, um, throughout the presentation if need be. So, if we go down a page in the PowerPoint, we'll go to required communications. Um, so our primary responsibility as auditors is to provide an opinion on the fairness of the financial statements presented tonight. We do review internal accounting controls. We make sure that there's controls in place, and then also, we do test those controls. If those controls are not working, we definitely let the board be aware of that. Um, we do a risk-based audit approach. We don't test every transaction, but we do some detail level testing. Um, and then we review current year to prior year and then current year to budget. If anything looks out of the ordinary, we're gonna do more testing in those items as well. We do review, um, internal controls and compliance for federal awards. So, the district expended more than $750,000 in federal dollars. This year is significantly higher than last year. We'll go through that, you know, when we get to the numbers. Um, so we did have to do additional testing on those dollars coming in. Um, we do definitely communicate before we come out to do the audit, so that Stacy's ready and her team is ready for us. Significant accounting policies, those are gonna be outlined in Note 1 to your financial statements, um, but they are comparable to prior year. So, if you looked at this year's financial statements compared to prior year, there's not gonna be any significant changes, um, because there were no unusual transactions and then no new standards for this year. Page three, um, so within the bound document, we'd just like to give you a reminder that within there, there are management judgments and accounting estimates. Uh, we talk about special education quite a bit. Um, the net pension liability is your para and TRA liability amounts. Those are estimated and updated each year. Um, the state does issue new reports for both of those each year. There have been no disagreements with management. Um, so page four, um, difficulties in current form in the audit, none. Um, Stacy and her team are able to put us at the top, um, of the list when we come out to do fieldwork. Um, and then the follow-up is fairly seamless as well for wrap-up. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements, there are none. Um, so that really says a lot, that as you're getting the financial statements throughout the year, um, those are accurate numbers. We're not coming in and adjusting those, um, at all for the audit. So, you can really make informed decisions with that information that you're being given. Page five, so overall summary of the audit results. Uh, so unmodified or clean opinion, highest level of assurance that us as auditors can give on those financial statements. Internal control, uh, two material weaknesses, same as prior year. So, the bound document that you see in front of you, we actually do prepare that. We do give it, um, draft to Stacy. She reviews those, make sure she's in agreement with the numbers. And we've talked about this in the past, lack of segregation and duties. So, we just keep, you know, mentioning that, reminding the board of that, um, just so that you can, um, look at that information as you get it, ask those questions, look at this, first ones going out and receipts coming in, um, just for anything unusual that you might see. The uniform grant guidance is a single audit that I've talked about, so those are the federal dollars. We did issue an unmodified opinion on those. Uh, the two major programs this year were child nutrition and then those coronavirus relief funds that came in towards the end of the year that had to be spent. Um, and so, when we went through those and did our detailed testing, there were no findings noted. So, for the Corona Relief Funds, those are brand-new funds, brand-new program, and we came in and audited it with no findings. So, that is really significant, um, to note, to be able to spend that money in compliance with everything, um, that was given. Minnesota Leave Compliance, just two findings here. There was one payment over 35 days that we did test. We tested 25 of those. Um, so just keep in mind, um, it's gotta get to the business office timely so that they can get it in front of the board and get it paid. And the, um, school is required to pay within 35 days of receiving that invoice unless they can document that they have issues. So, if, um, say somebody ordered books and you didn't get all of them, we definitely are not saying you should pay that invoice. You should wait until you get the rest of that shipment, but you just need to document that. Um, so we'll just keep that in mind. Um, I know Stacy tries to, to do that with all the departments and teachers and things like that. And then deposits in investments, just approval of that safekeeping, I think, just needs to be done on an annual basis.
Mary?
Yes?
Roxanne had a question. Can she jump in?
Okay. Yes, for sure.
My mic wasn't...just a minute, I gotta make sure my mic is working. Oh, there it is. Okay, just because other, for other people who may ask, um, after they watch this, can you do a quick explanation of the two weaknesses, just a real quick, because I know people say, "Well, what do you mean by that?"
Right, okay. So, preparation of the financial statements. So, from Stacy, we get, um, the numbers, right? The general ledger tells us what the numbers are for the year, and then we just take those and we put it into the bound audit financial statements. So, the big bound book that you're reviewing, we actually prepare those, and then we have Stacy review those. So, in the accounting world, in our Gatsby world, that is a finding, it's a material weakness, um, because you don't have somebody internally that can prepare those financial statements.
Okay.
Um, about 90% of my school districts have this finding as well.
And the lack of segregation and duties, do you want to hit on, or comes in with only having three people down there, and for instance, right now, there's two people down there because we have one out. And when you start doing, you know, for instance, let's just talk, cash receipts for, for the hockey game tonight. When one person takes it, another person should technically count it. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, a third person should take it to the bank, is that correct, or, or all, you know, it's different people, you don't have the same person doing multiple steps? Is that a fair statement?
That is fair. Yes, correct, exactly. You gotta separate out those accounting duties, yep.
Okay, thanks.
And you just, yep, and the district is just too small to do that right now, um, as far as staff-wise. Yep. Good, perfect. Okay, so I think I hit on those. We'll go to page six. We'll get into the actual numbers here. So, this is the general fund. Far left, you can see is 2021, and then far right is your 2017 number, so you can see how the district did, um, year over year. So, revenues compared to budget were about $284,000 below budget. Expenditures were about $191,000 under budget. So, when you look at the overall net change in fund balance, you had a negative about $752,000. You actually budgeted for a loss of about $659,000. Um, so you came in a little bit under budget from what you were expecting, but if you look back in 2020, 2019, and those, they're all positive. So, right now, the loss is not concerning, right? You just don't want to see that continue year over year. Um, so just keep that in mind as you go throughout, uh, this year as well. When you break it down, you can see if you go towards the bottom, unassigned fund balance of about 2.8, so that did decrease from last year. When you compare that unassigned fund balance to expenditures, um, you're at about 19.8%, which means you have just over two months of fund balance there to pay for normal operations. The district's policy is to have between two and three months. So, you are still meeting, um, district policy by the unassigned fund balance amount. Restricted fund balance, um, increased a little bit, that's gonna be anything from the state or outside donations, um, student activities is in there as well. And then assigned fund balance, anything set aside for projects coming up in the next year. Page seven, food service fund is up top. So, 2021, about $530,000 of revenues. That was about $29,000 over budget. Expenditures, about $519,000, that was $15,000 under budget. So, if you look at your net change in fund balance, $11,000, and you budgeted for a loss of $33,000. So, a little bit unique this year, and why federal went up so much, was food service was 100% reimbursed through federal, so you didn't have to worry about delinquent collections. Um, you just received that, and then that was a little bit higher rate than what the state, um, had been paying as well. So, you did see, even with the drop in enrollment, you did see, um, a little bit of increased revenues than expected because of that as well. So, within, um, fund balance, food service, all of that is restricted for food service. So, that $77,000 will have to be spent within food service. Um, and just keep in mind, you're not, you know, 21, 22 school years, the same, so it'll be 100% federal reimbursed, um, but that won't be the case necessarily year over year. So, just keep that in mind too.
I'm just gonna pipe in one second. The, the other difference that we did this year, we added at the end more ESER money into Fund 2 than what we had budgeted, to keep the bottom line whole, as, as well. So, um, there was more ESER money pushed into Fund 2 than I had originally planned.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Right below that is the community service fund. There with revenues about $453,000. Those were $75,000 over budget. Uh, expenditures at $443,000, and those were $26,000 over budget. But when you look, net change in fund balance, um, positive $10,000, and you budgeted for a loss of $39,000. Um, so really able to maintain community service this year.
And that is also one of the funds where there was a UFAR's change, the basic skills. And we'll talk about that later when I do a presentation, but we had to move money that's normally in Fund 1 to Fund 4 because of the reporting for UFAR's, for the basic skills. So, that did change. That's partly why those revenues and expenditures went up so much, because it was about $75,000.
Perfect. Okay, so the next page, this is the debt service fund here. Um, so revenues should come in enough to cover the principal and interest payments, so kind of shocking to see expenditures of 1.2. But when you look at it, you actually had refunding bonds last year of $945,000, and you paid off bonds this year, um, with that money. So, it just crossed over in years. And so, when you look at it, you, you truly do have restricted fund balance of about $59,000. Um, so you are levying 105% of those principal and interest payments each year, um, and then you collect those, and then the state kind of monitors. If you have too much fund balance, then of course they'll reduce the levy, um, but they'll kind of monitor your fund balance, make sure it needs to be where it's at. Right below that is capital projects fund, so it's been going for a couple of years. You can see this year, um, 1.2 million in expenditures, so that did end up closing out the capital projects fund, ended with zero balance for this year. So, then this wouldn't be used again unless you had new bonds, um, or new project going on. So, where are the revenues coming in from to the district? You can see here, state at 60%. Last year was 65. Uh, you'll notice a drop on the next page. Federal was at 14, is at 14% this year, 8% last year. We talked about the increase there, um, in a couple of different areas. And then property taxes at 24%, and that was actually at 22% last year. So, a little bit of shift in the pie chart. So, then when you go to the next page, I actually just give you a comparison, right? So, you don't, you don't have to rely on the pie chart. But here you can see how things were affected. Um, property taxes went up a little bit. If you look at state, decreased quite a bit. Um, and we'll take a look at your ADMs, average daily membership here in a little bit too, but significant decrease in enrollment. And then when you look at federal, that increased significantly from last year. We talked about that, the food service, the CARES, the ESER, all of those new funds coming in. And then charges for services is gonna go down because that used to be your food service, which now went to federal. Um, so that's the biggest drop there. So, where is that revenue being spent? Um, biggest piece, of course, is your regular instruction, putting that back into the classrooms. Um, but that was at 41%, and then your capital outlay was actually at 10% last year, and this year 14%, um, quite a bit of expenditures there. So, again, the next page lets you look at those and do comparisons, prior year. Okay, you can see capital outlay significantly increased from last year, along with debt service. So, you'll see that debt service, the 850, 850,000 extra payments in there. And then, um, Stacy, pupil support, is that a little bit of that CARES money as well? Is that why that increased too?
Sorry? I was unmuted. Yes, so we did, um, increase pupil support with that ESER money as well, yes.
Perfect. I've seen a lot of my schools have that, in that category as well, so.
Yeah. The revenue payment. Well, the, uh, different things.
Perfect, sorry. Um, page 13, so average daily membership, so far left is 2021, going back to 2017. Um, here you can see significant decrease. Um, so your resident ADMs, 985 from last year and about 922 this year, um, so quite a bit of a drop there. You do get extra funding for the secondary, and you can see you took, um, quite a bit of hit there as well. You dropped. Um, so you went from weighted average daily membership of 1,079 to 1,011, which will decrease quite a bit of your state aid as well. Okay, page 14 then shows your enrollment gain or loss, so open enrollment, um, in and out here. So, you can see 2021, um, had about a 208 loss, but it was actually better than last year of 213. Um, so usually when I see that significant decrease in enrollment, um, a lot of people ask, okay, were there families that moved out, or did they, you know, transfer? What happened? Where are those students at? And so, when I looked, total residents last year was 1177 for students, and this year is 1122. So, quite a bit of drop from just your residents in the district. Um, and so what I actually have been talking about is homeschool. So, I, I know that a lot of districts have had, um, quite a few students homeschool, and so when they homeschool, they come out of that, um, count altogether. So, when you look at your drop in total residents, it might not be that you lost families, it could be that they just decided to keep their kids, um, at homeschool. And hopefully, um, when things may be more normal, they'll come back to the district then at that point. And Stacy, have you guys seen a, a grease in, um, enrollment yet this year, or none?
No, not at all. Definitely down.
Okay. Um, and I would, very common for all of my districts to be down this, um, this last year in enrollment, um, and only a few have seen that actually go back up now, as of now, so. Okay. Then this gives, gives you a quick view of the expenditures per weighted average daily membership. So, of course, this number's gonna go up. Expenditures went up, and then your students went down. So, your base calculation is gonna be quite a bit different as well. And then page 16 gives your revenues for the same count, the student count. Again, um, a lot of these will shift state, you can see actually dropped, um, just due to the decrease in enrollment and then the decrease in revenues coming in. So, that was a quick overview of the financial statements, um, with the information that you're getting. I don't, I don't know what to hope, there'd be no surprises, but I'm definitely here to answer questions if there's any more.
Are there specific questions for Mary? We're gonna, um, later on, we're gonna actually come back and look at some of the differences and, you know, talk a little more specifically on what some of the exact, you know, why there are differences, um, and just so you have a little better explanation of, you know, why there's a difference of 200,000 or 400,000 in a certain area, and just kind of give you a little more. Um, Stacy has a, I'm gonna say a similar presentation than we have used the last few years to explain a little more in-depth, but as far as Mary, on the process, anything for specific questions, you want from an auditor, kind of, to one of us answering?
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mary.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, thank you. See you later.
Okay.
So, just give us one second, so, um, Stacy will let me get the, well, stop sharing and let me get the agenda back up.
Okay. My mic keeps going from a red light to no light, and every once in a while, there's green light, but not very often.
Here, I'll switch it.
Okay, and now, so, could I have a motion to accept the audited financial report?
Aye.
Second?
Also, yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, and now, we are going to do the...
And I apologize, we, we forgot to put, we need a motion, the motion in the second on there. Somehow we missed that on the consent agenda, Rox, on the top.
On the consent agenda?
Yep, there should be.
Not mine.
It's right here, we need a motion in a second.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? By Emily, and a second?
Joanne.
Joanne, all those in favor?
Oh, hey, can I just make a few comments, again? Um, first of all, number four, Josie Tonato's retiring, um, from the counseling office. I would just like to thank her, um, she's worked in various spots throughout the district over the years. Thank her for her years of service and wish her the best. Um, I just wanted to mention on number six, the applicable contract, thank you to Ted, uh, Jen, and Tony. They took and made, um, some recommendations. We met together, had some data, um, some of the positions, we had some, are recommending some increases, and we were talking more of the part-time, as far as, I'm just throwing it out there, lifeguard and some training, student workers, um, in that, um, adjusting LPN aid. Everyone's getting their raise. The full-time people got the 2% and 1%, like the majority of the rest of our contracts. The full-timer getting the, um, $2,000 stipend, the 1,000, the second year of the contract. The part-time workers, that's not applying. You know, a summer student worker isn't getting that $2,000. Um, I just wanted to mention, uh, where am I at here?
She's worked in various spots throughout the district over the years. Thank her for her years of service and wish her the best. I just wanted to mention on number six, the Atwill contract. Thank you to Ted, Jen and Tony. They took and made some recommendations. We met together, had some data. Some of the positions, we had some, are recommending some increases and we're talking more of the part-time as far as, I'm just throwing it out there, lifeguard and some training, student workers in that, adjusting LPN aid. Everyone's getting a raise. The full-time people got the 2% and 1%, like the majority of the rest of our contracts. The full-timer getting the $2,000 stipend, the 1,000, the second year of the contract. The part-time workers, that's not applying. You know, summer student worker isn't getting that $2,000. I just wanted to mention, where am I at here? Paul Ferring, bus driver, we have a resignation. He's moving, taking another job, just giving a heads up. And then number eight, you had hired Janessa earlier, but we actually put her contract together, so it's a formal contract in writing based on the grant. And then the last thing, number 18, with our team works getting a calendar put together, I'm asking if it's okay, or at least we're trying to say that we would like to do a February 3rd meeting instead of February 7th would have been the first meeting of the month. Can we do, at least the majority, and I know Bruce, I think you're gonna be on, and if you want to participate, you can, whatever, it's a Thursday, I think, and so.
Yeah, I was trying.
Asking if, you know, that would be okay, 5:30?
February 7th, is it?
February 3rd. Normally February 7th would be if we're meeting the first and the third Monday, but trying to get everyone together, that's a date from them and us that would work. Roughly three hours, it's a first session, the school board and administrative, and can't tell you much more about it than that, but we will go with it if that's okay. And those are the only comments I have.
Okay. Let me just make it out here. Okay. All right, now, we have, did we have a motion in a second?
Emily made the motion, Joanne in the second.
Discussion, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, action items. Now we have the resolution of the acceptance of gifts and donations, whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district and whereas the I Fall School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district, whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states, "The school board may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public School District ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. District donations received." So we do the motion next?
Should technically get a motion, yes.
Okay. Could I have a motion?
I'll move, Joanne.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, the following, oh wait.
Yep, and then just read through and acknowledge each donation.
Okay. Peter R. March Foundation Grant, Falls High School Music Program, $1,000. Bravo Swim Boosters Competition Swimsuits, $1,744.43. Box tops for education, Falls L. School, $32.30. Mighty Cause Charitable Foundation Alternative Learning Center, $20. Coca-Cola Gifts, Falls High School, $30.90. Whereupon?
Okay, so you have a motion in a second.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and do I have to list those?
No, not for this. If we were, certain motions, we do need to do a roll call. For this, we do not, so then the motion, resolution passes 6-0.
Okay, whereupon the resolution was declared, adopted, right?
Perfect.
Okey-dokey. Now, the next thing on the agenda is the resolution directing administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Motion, could I get a motion?
Joanne?
Okay, second. Okay, resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas the financial conditions of the school district may dictate that the school board reduce expenditures and whereas there may be a decline in student enrollment projections and whereas reductions in expenditures and decrease in student enrollment projections may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of the programs and whereas a determination must be made as to whether, as to which teachers' contracts must be terminated and not renewed and which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits in affecting discontinuance of positions, be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District 361 as follows. That the school board hereby directs the superintendent of schools and administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies in the school district and reduce expenditures and make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions or curtailment of positions as needed. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by who?
Emily.
Emily. And upon vote being taken thereon, the following voted in favor thereof.
So now I have. If I can just make one comment, just so everyone's aware, this is the resolution we do each year, just so that if the district does need to do a reduction, we've done this resolution and we can. I mean, the upfront, all, you know, any reductions, additions, whatever, all comes to the board. It's just we legally have to put this out there in the event that you wanted to reduce a program, cut something. I'll be honest, you know, with ESAR money and stuff, we're gonna talk about some of that in the, you know, coming weeks, month. I don't see major changes. We have some things that there's probably gonna be some absorbing maybe, if that's the right word, some people leaving, you know, maybe not replacing, but this, as long as you're on the board, we're gonna do this resolution in January every year. Whether that way, so I'm just throwing it out there. Does that make sense, everyone?
Okay. Now do I have to list?
No, now, any other conversation, discussion questions? If not, you can, and again, we can just do all in favor.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion was passed. Right? Okay, now, let me see what's next. Okay. Approve, do we?
Yep, just go ahead.
Number three?
Yep.
Okay, approve the collective bargaining agreement with American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees L. 510 for July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moving.
Second?
I'll second.
Tony, all those in favor?
Can I just make a couple of comments? I apologize. Okay, so the 510 agreement, just kind of just to highlight, and I hope I'm wrong, we did do a little bit of adjusting to kind of the boilermen, the firemen, and we broke those positions, says same as firemen, we broke them into based on licensure. So if someone gets a special, which is the, I'm just gonna say the first license you need, they would be in a pay spot. If you get your second class, which is the next license after, I think it takes a year to get it, you get a pay increase. And then if you get to second class, just a special, second class, first class, as you move up, you get pay increases. So we did change that a little bit and we did do a little bit of adjustment based on kind of the going rates. We did look at various positions and we took the first step up, so I'm just being honest. This group got a little different deal, you know, a little bit different than maybe all the other groups, but it's based on some data collected, looking at different districts. And we reduced, instead of having, I'm just gonna say, many different steps, we broke it down into, I think there's four steps now. You know, starting where you're put on, then I think it's year three, and again, I can pull it up here, year six and year nine. So we condensed the scale and again, trying to make it more competitive and keep people, to be honest, we lost, I'm just gonna use boilermen as an example, company over the last few years, going either to the county, to different places, and it's mainly being financially competitive. So those were the main, I'm gonna say the main financial pieces. Year two, they got one or one-half percent, then one percent. We did the stipend, okay, the 2,000, 1,000, same as we're doing with other groups and a few minor other tweaks, you know, in language and stuff, some things that I'm gonna say are good for the district, trying to make life a little bit simpler, as many clock ins, clock outs, but definitely in favor and I think the group worked diligently to get to this point, they have passed, okay, they voted last week and so it's up to us now. Questions for the negotiating group?
Okay, so now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passed. Number four, approving, approve updating contracts with Technology Director and Community Ed Director effective July 1, 2021 to receive 2% pay increase along with $1,000 recruitment and retention stipend paid in January 2022 for employees who are currently employed and worked majority of the days from July 1, 2021 through December 31, 2022 and $1,000 paid at the end of June 2022 for employees who are employed and work the majority of the days from January 1, 2022 through June 30, 2022. Positions will receive a 1% raise effective July 1, 2022 along with the recruitment and retention stipend of $1,000 paid in June of 2023 for employees currently employed and who are, who worked the majority of the days from July 1, 2022. Could I have a motion?
And before we do anything, I'm just gonna explain why this is here and where it's at. Emily, I'm gonna ask that you abstain because technically her husband was in this position on July 1 and so I'll talk about that in a few minutes, but the community ed director and technology director technically have separate contracts. We consider them at will employees, okay? And I'll talk a little bit more in a few minutes. If we can get a motion in a second, but I wanted to mention because technically for a period of time, it's gonna involve your husband, so. So if we can get a motion in a second, then I'll just.
Okay, could I get a motion?
I'll move, Joanne.
Joanne, second?
Me, second.
Jen and all those in favor?
Can I just make a couple more comments? So what happened, and I'm just gonna, and this is before my time, but years ago, all the Atwill were individual contracts, okay? So the business manager, accounts payable, every position was separate, okay? And I'll be honest, and this was explained to me, is somewhere maybe 10 years ago or something, there was complaints because people were getting different deals, so to speak. So what they did at the time, I'm not saying right or wrong, they brought them as many as they could together in the Atwill. We call it the policy, it's technically an Atwill scale or whatever. So the business managers in there, the accounts payable, the maintenance, certain positions. For whatever reason, community ed isn't in there and technology, and I'm guessing Dave Skorop was our tech director for many years and was a teacher on special assignment. And so I don't know if that played in or whatever, but these two weren't in there in origin. And so they're all separate and so one way, shape, or form, we have to approve them. We're recommending the same deal that the Atwills got, okay? And to be honest with you, I guess personally, I think it should go back to the way it was. You know, those Atwills, if you wanted to, and I'm just gonna throw something out there, community ed for instance, we're gonna bring these out of contract next month, this approved and it's best contract, which we've hired her, but there's a stipulation group recommended in negotiations was to cover her cell phone, okay? Well, because she uses that quite a bit, she's, I mean, lifeguards, you know, different things. Well, without a separate contract, how do you do that in the policy? You know, if you wanted to do something for the payroll person. Well, it's hard when it's all, so personally, I'm just gonna say it's a different stance. I think they should go back to all having an individual contract. Do I support negotiating for the most part as a group and giving, just like they do all the other groups, 2%, 1%, a similar deal? I do, but if there is a tweak you wanna make, it is hard to do when they're, you see it, I'm saying they can have the same language, have the same insurance policy, have the same, but so my plan, assuming this is approved, we're gonna move forward and as we have time, bring our approval, it'll be all the same, you know, contracts, but so that everyone has their own contract, there'll be same language. Now, the part-time people, that'll stay in, it's having, you know, what we pay the sub custodian, what we pay sub bus drivers, what we pay the summer people, that will be, you know, a pay, they don't have individual contracts, okay? But the one down here, and again, I'm just gonna be upfront, honest, I'm recommending from the group that everyone get from July 1 on the 2%. That would affect, and I'm just being honest, someone that left the district, technically you don't have to, but I guess I'm looking at it, on July 1, if we would have done all these, Dan would have got a raise, you know, and so my, personally, I think it's only right to do that, but I've been upfront, you don't have to. So the language here, I'm proposing anyone from July 1 would get that and we would retro. Does that make sense? Questions?
And we've also had, the committee did review that.
Yeah, the committee did.
Jen was part of that and you were part of it and Ted too, right?
Yep, Ted was part of it.
Okay. Any question?
So you have a motion from Joanne and second, Jen?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Just a motion passed. Oh, and seen is Emily. Okay, and the motion passed, thank you. Number five, were you gonna say something, Kevin?
No, I didn't.
Number five, approve unpaid leave of absence under MS 122A.46 for Heather Eagle, elementary teacher, effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025, contingent upon district filling the position, the leave is for the school years 2022 through 23, 2023 through 24, and 2024 through 25. I assume you want to, you want, could I have a motion? Emily, and second?
Second, Joanne.
Joanne, okay, and then did you wanna talk, Kevin?
If I'll just mention, and again, Heather approached, myself actually talked to her supervisor, Miss State, and then came and had a conversation with me and if, I'm thinking, this up here, sorry, gave us a letter, they are buying a family business and she has taught long enough, she qualifies for the leave if the board wants to approve it. Notice we put in there contingent upon finding a replacement. I'll be honest with you, I don't know if we're gonna need one exactly at this point, but on the flip side, I wanna make sure we can get before we say someone is able to leave. I don't, I'll be honest, I told Heather, I don't wanna lose her, but on the other hand, I understand people have opportunities. She's 100% not sure she's ready to be done, being a teacher, and so that's why she's asking for it. Technically, the statute is a three to five-year leave. They notify us by February, it's either first 15, sometime in February, she could come back, you know, a year from now, she could come back after year two, but we also have language in our contract that says we have the ability to, you know, put a timeline on it. And so I talked to her and I said, you should know in, I'm gonna say, three years, if you're ready, you know, if you're done. And I said, if you are, then I'm burning a bridge. She's interested in possibly subbing, I don't have an answer when I leave if you can do that, you know, because typically you can't go teach somewhere else. You know, they don't want you taking a leave from I Falls to go work and, you know, and seeing if you like that better. I will check it because again, she's, you know, she has, gonna have a student still going to school and stuff and it's not like they're not gonna be around and she agreed, you know, they're gonna know in a year or two if, you know.
And is that something that can be extended to five years?
It's called a. It's called a three to five-year leave, but we have language that we can. Because what happens is if we did hire someone, they're hanging out there then for three, four, five years, not knowing. So I'm recommending we say maximum three years. You know, she may, she may a year from now or two years from now notify us and come back. She can come back early, but you have to let nobody. So it would be, I'm going to, we did that with another teacher that went and worked at TrueStark. We're not going to wait five years. You know, you go try it, if it's right for you, more power to you, thank you, you know? And we limited it three years. We haven't limited every position, I'll be honest. You know, there's one we didn't have to hire anyone for. So we didn't, you know, put a limit on it. The person's out on leave right now, but we weren't replacing, so to speak. So I don't feel like I'm held, you know, at the same place where we do replace, a new person's has that held over. So it's, I'm supporting it. And I told Heather, I hope we get you back, but that's selfish. Yeah, you know, please. Does that make sense?
Well, I think it's one of the benefits that teachers can get is that they have some kind of, some of these kinds of things that they can take advantage of. I know I took sabbatical a couple of different times, and it was a wonderful experience for me. So, you know, they certainly deserve all those things for everything they put in, so. Okay, now we are at the point where we have to have all those in favor, right?
Are there any other questions? Anyone want to make any comments or anything?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passed. Now, we are going into a bunch of discussion.
Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing so Stace can bring.
I don't know how to make it any bigger, I'm sorry.
Just run with it for now, talk through it and we can send this out. Or it is attached, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. Yep, it's attached. All right, okay, so let me do this. Okay, so we're going to go over just very briefly, kind of a high recap, short recap of the audited versus budgeted for '21. And then basically what we're going to do is I'm going to give you the revised revenues for '22 and kind of where we have thumbed out '23. So let's just go with this. So back, and now, one caveat before we get going too far. Mary, so during that audit presentation, Fund One, in terms of the audit in that financial report, includes what I call Fund Eleven, which is our donations. Procedurally, when I bring Fund One to you, to the board, we're just literally talking Fund One without that Fund Eleven, because that Fund Eleven is really all your donation money and is committed, and it is a hundred and some thousand plus. So I do pull that out. So this just really is Fund One, literally what you have control over in terms of revenue and expenditures.
Stacy, is there, is there something in writing? I keep looking to see, do we have it on paper at all or?
You don't have it on paper, I mean, we can get you a paper copy.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to know if I should be looking at.
No, if you were on, online electronically, it's attached.
Okay.
Okay. But just so everyone's aware, you know, for instance, like full-size foundation, they donated 30-plus thousand this year, and that's what she's talking about. She pulls out, but Mary would have said, that's district money that's in, you know? And so it's just a little difference, caveat if you will. Again, it is an expense and a revenue, but we don't really budget for it, either revenue or expense, okay?
This is just your main operating funds. So the revised budget for Fund One was $13,463,966. The final audited came in at $13,228,72. The result was that we were under budget by $235,894, which was about a 1.75 variance from revised. So I missed the budget by 1.75%, basically is what it amounts to, if you want to say it that way. On the expense size, the budget for expenses was $14,122,568. The ending audit number was $13,975,824. So I missed the budget, final to budget, I missed by, under budget by $146,744, which was about a negative 1% variance. So overall, I was 2 and 1/4% off on revenue and expenditures, under budget, both sides. And we'll kind of recap a couple of things for reference. In '21, I overshot, revenue overshot budget by $375,000, which was about a 3% over-budget variance. And on the expenditures, the expenditure variance was under by $600,000. So it definitely tightened up the expense budget, and that was a 4.4% variance. And I see I have a typo here, this should say fiscal '20, not fiscal '21, sorry about that. On the next page, we're just going to look at a high level of kind of some of those variances. Now, keep in mind, the budget is spread over, the revenue budget is probably spread over 100 coding lines individually. I'm just netting everything up into the main categories that had the largest variances. These are not meant to match. So when I say this, that the levy and gen ed was under budget by $200,000, don't try to compare that to this number here. This is just one of the most significant areas in the revenue budget, all the lines that were, had this most significant variance. So in the '21 budget, levy and gen ed aid were $10,437,000. The audited final came in at $10,236. So I overshot the budget to reality by $200,000. So why? Two big, two things. UFRs, basic skills. So UFRs is the, what men, so statutes mandate how we manage money as well as what's called the UFRs. And so the UFRs grid changed for the basic skills. So typically, all of the preschool, so we use basic skills money to help pay for part of the preschool, school readiness classes. There was a coding change last year that said I could no longer put preschool into Fund One and use basic skills in Fund One. That had to get taken out of Fund One and moved to Fund Four. So basically what that did is it took out about $75,000 out of the general fund that was in the revenue and the expense and moved it to Fund Four, revenue expense. And that will be forever ongoing, so it's going to show as a shift.
Keep in mind, Fund Four is the community ed fund.
Community ed.
Preschool food.
So that was one that we did not find until we actually were in midst of closing out the fiscal year. And then the levy actually was budgeted to where we, what we actually collected in levy was under about $129,000. In terms of ADM, the most, the other significant factor is the final revenue budget used in adjusted ADM estimate of $937. Final actually came in at $940,000, which means I over, overshot by three. And you can see here the ALC, alternative learning. I had budgeted 13, about a 13 ADM. It actually came in at 21, so we gained, I gained eight ADM counts there. Whereas the residents and residents enrolled and residents and non-residents enrolled in, my budget was 917, and that came in at 914, so I was three under there. And then our tuition, I had seven basically out, and it actually was five. So the net of those three areas, and I got to quit clicking my mouse, I'm sorry. The net of those three areas amounts to, I was three over budget, I guess, in the end. So I missed it by three, I think that's pretty, pretty good, out of that many kids. Any questions? Are we good? Okay. Then if we were to look at the revenue budget in terms of revenue sources, you can see the levy and gen ed aid overall, there's the $200,000 under budget that we talked about. State aids, I was under budget, or over budget, came in over budget by $38,000, 3% variance for just that category. Federal, which is special ed title, was $28,000 under budget. A lot of that ended up being carryover into fiscal '22. And then the federal COVID funding was $11,000 under budget. And what ended up happening is towards the end, we flexed money into Fund Two to cover the Fund Two expenditures there that had qualifying expenses. And then local and miscellaneous, which is just dues and memberships and miscellaneous things, I was over budgeted by $56,000 on that one, so I do need to kind of do some work on that section. In terms of the expense side, we're going to look at it in terms of object series. So wages, I undershot the wages by $53,000, I'll call it $54,000, which is like a 0.7 variance, 7 tenths of a variance, under budget. And benefits, I under budgeted, ended up being under budget by $140,000. So again, we need to look at benefits a little bit tighter on our budgets. Purchase services came in over budget by $23,000. Supplies were under by $36,000. Capital expenditures, which are like our vehicles, our things that are capital, heavy-duty projects, things like that, $24,000 over budget. And again, on the dues and membership on this side, I was $35,000 over. So that's kind of where that. Going into the final budget last year for '21, I tried to do a more of a conservative approach to try to narrow in on, I think when we talked last year around this time, we talked about the variance being, you know, how comfortable were we with a 3% variance, a 4% variance? So I did slim down that expense budget. The result of that was that the revenue budget basically came in about 2% under budget, where in the past I have been over budgeted on revenue. And then on the expenses, expenses actually came in 1% under budget for variance instead. And then basic skills, so I just want to note for, had we not had that basic skill shift, the revenues would have been under by $161,000, and the expenses would have been under by $72,000. So just as a comparison. And then I'm just giving you kind of, again, a recap of what the variances were the year before. So variance-wise, I think I'm tighter, but we can go from there. Any questions? Okay. Okay, now we're going to go over '22 revised and '23. I think at the January 3 meeting, the board was given a five-year ADM projection. And we're going to look at this. So kind of where I'm going to start is I'm going to take out the two main revenue categories that we have, which are gen ed and levy. So I just wanted to kind of focus on those two before we went, put them both together. So for fiscal '21, audited, gen ed and levy came in at $10,132,000, or million, excuse me. Right now, the original fiscal '22 budget for those two items was $10,124,532. On running the revised draft with updated numbers, we are looking at a revised levy and gen ed total revenue of $10,208,345. Now, you'll see here that that is an increase of $75,000, which I was not anticipating, but there's a couple of things that have happened. In the original budget here for gen ed, we used a, the governor's formula. Remember, if you remember, they were not settled when we did the budgets. The governor's formula was for $6,633 per ADM. But the actual final came in at $6,728. So that is a large part of why this gen ed has gone up. The other part is that when I did the budget for tentative '22, I had an ADM, adjusted ADM in there at $906. Now, after I've revised everything, the new number in the '22 revised revenue is $899. So I really only had an adjustment of $7 ADM down on that. So we go to '20, '23. So now we're going to add '20, '23 on there. You can see in '20, '23, what we're looking at is for gen ed. We're going to drop down to $7,737,000. Levy has gone up. So the levy, there is a one-time increase in there of $374,000 for LTFM. That's why this has gone up. It's a one-time. Total for '23, we're looking at $10,389,000, which over '23 from '22 is actually an increase of $181,000. But again, that is the result of this $374,000 levy adjustment that we've got going on.
And keep in, just so everyone's aware, the levy you approved not long ago is, it was approved, and now it's received in '23. It followed, we approved the levy for '22, it's recognized in '23. So that's where that's coming, coming from. And it is a one-time, it's one-time levy of that amount, so.
That amount, yep. So and the adjusted ADM on this run is 875. Now, just a couple caveats here. This is very soft. So this is just me pushing forward numbers, dialing it in. The levy is locked, that's not going to change. That's locked because we've certified it. But this gen ed is the one that we'll just kind of need to keep watching. As our ADM adjusts this year, our ADM will adjust in '23. Then if we put the whole thing together, kind of where we're at, what we're looking at is, I think Kevin had pointed this out, we were going to do a budget with COVID and a budget without COVID. So the no-COVID budget that we would normally be used to would be a total of $12,401,000. That is $183,000 under what '21 is, if you throw the COVID money. So '21, no COVID, ending was $12,584,000. Compared to what we're looking at right now with the revised is $12,401,000. Okay? You can see here, and I'm not going to go through and read each one of these numbers, but basically this is '22 without the COVID funding, and the COVID funding is right here. Oh, sorry, I clicked again. And then if we add in the COVID money, which, this is a very soft number here. $1,916,000 is kind of what we've templated in. If we don't spend all of that COVID money, we'll move that COVID money into fiscal '23 as well. Then we're looking at 14, 3, and now pushing out to 23 comparatively. Again, the revenue goes up to $12,530,000 for fiscal '23. But again, keep in mind, what we just talked about is that levy has a significant impact on the fact that that revenue was up $128,000. And again, that's just a one-time increase. Questions? Or do you want me to go into something else more specific?
So just so the board's on track, so what we did, because it comes out, is when we look at our audit, there should be some questions of, you know, are we down $200,000, $300,000, or up or vice versa? So trying to just give some, again, a little more in-depth of explanation of the audit that you just received. And also looking at our revenue numbers. Now, keep in mind, revenue is only one side of the picture, it has the money coming in, okay? The harder part now, moving forward, and I'll talk about some dates coming in just a little bit, is going to be to look at the expense. And we're going to do the same thing, is we're going to take and push our expenses forward, you know, pretty much everything that we know. And we're going to do two columns, kind of like this, even though it is confusing. But I want you to know our recommendation for the number of sections in every grade, so to speak, and what that would total out to, because let's face it. And I'm not talking employees in general, all positions we're going to put. And then here's what we're doing with COVID. And so that we can say, hey, we have $500,000 that, without COVID money, or 600, or 40, you know, whatever, that we have to be ready to be, if you want to say, done with or adjusted a couple of years from now. And you see that again, and we're going to talk about what do we want to do with the remaining money, okay? And that's why we say this 1.9 million in COVID, it's an estimate on, A, some things we're covering right now, but it's also on some things we think that might get done, but there's some conversation of what else we want to do, okay? And so maybe it's only 1.2 million we use, you know, this year. And the rest of that would get pushed out into '23 and '24. And then it's got to be spent by them, okay? Revenue, one side, and like I say, it's fair statement, Stacy, the easier side?
Revenue is the way easier side. Revenue, yeah. Revenue is a few hundred lines. Expenses are, it's a lot more complicated. A lot more complicated.
Any questions right at this point? The bigger deal is those audited numbers now are, they're accurate, they're exact. There's no more guessing where we were for last year. At fiscal, what we say '21, we're in fiscal '22 now. Those numbers are changing. But '21 is all, to them, okay? And good, bad, or indifferent, it's where we're at. And we'll talk more when we get the expense. We'll also look at fund balance and how things, and now what we do affect that, and we'll go forward. So the only other thing I would, again, I'm just going to say thank you to Stacy, as well as, and she said it to Mary before she jumped out, as much as it's, I'm going to say, a horrible process, more for the business office to go through than myself. But it is a good thing too, because it kind of clears our hair, so to speak. And again, it's, you know, just that things are okay, you know, but Stacy and her team are the ones that do 99.99% of the work. And thank you, and I hope the board appreciates for your city. Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you. I remember a few years back, we had a gathering of us in the home ec room, remember? And we had a, we went through budgets. Was that something different?
Well, I'm sure it was one of the working sessions, just like we're going to, we're going to do. We did last year, you know, where we were at. You know, every year, at least every year I've been here, we've done some form, and whether it was multiple, most years it's been multiple sessions where.
Right. I didn't know if this was replacing what we had.
No, this is just that, you know, some years it's been in November, we've gotten the audit. It kind of depends on when the audit firm can get here and it works and then, you know, how long it takes them. And I'll be honest with you, and how many schools they're going up to at what time as well. And so it's not all in our control. But this is more just a, the revenue is getting ready for the budget now. We're pushing forward, we have audited numbers. And give it just a little bit, I'll talk about some dates coming up that I'm going to propose to between February and March, mail things down, so to speak, because that's kind of the timeline. Okay. Stacy, do you have anything else you want?
No, I don't think so. I think we just need to start looking forward.
Okay, so, Rox, it's going to be.
Now, are we at the committee on administrative reports?
Yep.
Okay. And Mitch already gave his report while you guys did the pictures, so. Melissa Tate, do you have a report for us?
Our enrollment is at 443, which is just one student from last month. Yesterday, I just write it my own. Yesterday, we did training for letters. Early childhood was in one cohort and K through 5 was in another cohort, just because it's different training materials. Early childhood is separated out. And I did get a lot of positive feedback from teachers regarding the training, so I think it was well received. And we just continue to move forward with letters. The facilitator group just did, has started a training on unit three. And we actually will complete our facilitator training for volume one by the end of February. So then our in-house staff will then provide the unit two training for our teachers over early out. So that provides some more flexibility, so that's good. And then the facilitators will be starting volume two and will move forward to get that certification. I think some of you probably saw the survey that we put out on Facebook for to garner interest for summer school and after-school programs. We did get a fair amount of interest. And if you saw, we just tentatively put a lot of different options out there, maybe looking at a model that's more similar to college for kids, where you would still offer a reading and math component, but then kids could rotate to some other fun options. Just kind of look at some options that we could provide for the community. And so far, we've gotten 67 responses from our survey. And of those responses, I think like 98% are interested in summer school. So we're actually getting a large interest. But we met last night with a group of teachers. And I have a large group of teachers who are interested and I have a large group of parents who are interested. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get something good running for the summer. Our next step, we decided was we really needed to get some more firm numbers from families, more families. So we were probably going to send home paper surveys to families to have them come. Not that they would need to do a full commitment, but just kind of a tentative commitment of they'd want to send their kids up, what sessions they would be interested in, what classes. Because we need to decide for staffing, what classes we would want to offer and how many staff we would need. We talked about doing partner teachers so that, because we did talk about doing all of June and all of July, with the exception of the 4th of July, and running like a Monday through Thursday schedule. But we don't want teachers to get completely burnt out because they need a break too. So we talked about having partner teachers, where maybe one teacher would do a week and another teacher would do another week. So we have a lot of great ideas, a lot of staff helping to plan that. And I haven't talked to Kevin about all of that, but.
Is it all day long, Missy?
We are, we were talking about having the teachers maybe go from like 8 to noon. But then we are talking about having some of those extra fun classes, like maybe outdoor games, Lego, I mean, just different things that we can offer kids. And we did talk about having that maybe go until like 2:30 or 3 o'clock. And we talked about parents maybe staying to run some of those classes. And we also talked about the potential of maybe hiring some high school students to help run some of those classes, just to give parents more opportunity. Because there was a large, a large group of parents who were looking for something that extends later in the day. And I'm sure it also provides some daycare options for kids who, you know, are not at home and parents don't have daycare options. So it is, you know, when you think about some kids who are at home just on electronics or whatnot, when their parents are working the summer, this is kind of provides a nice opportunity for kids to still engage in some social opportunities and get some reading and math. And we talked about, like, because it wouldn't be just based on teacher recommendation, like, and found this good problem, we talked about also offering enrichment activities and reading and math for those kids who maybe weren't necessarily needing the extra support in reading and math, but still providing that support to all kids, whatever their schedule might look like. So early stages, nothing set in stone, but just some brainstorming conversations.
Is there anything that can be done, I'm sorry, I'm going to bother you. Anybody, anything that can be done to supplement, to make for those last few hours of a workday that would be a daycare type thing? Has, is there anything we can do?
I don't know. We haven't got that far to talk about. We just.
Okay, sorry.
Have you considered or connected with community ed and made this, or like even adding swimming lessons again? Yeah, we have, we did put swimming as an option. We have not connected with community ed, but we did think that connecting with community ed would be great. And we talked about, and a lot of these ideas come actually from a brochure of a summer school place where Tim had actually worked at one point. But we did talk about reaching out to community ed and maybe charging a small fee for some of these classes to make it sustainable into the future. And then we did talk about like allowing out-of-district kids to attend, but maybe their fee would be a little bit higher to attend the classes if they were out of district. Again, early stages, early tax, nothing set in stone.
Sounds good. Thanks for sharing.
Hold on, I'm not going to. We are still very short-staffed, of course. And it's not always just necessarily COVID. I mean, there's just other sickness happening too at this time of year. But, you know, we continue to just work together to cover where we need to and be flexible. Bless Jamie's heart, she was helping wash some cafeteria tables today. And that's, we're just doing what we have to to make sure everybody's covered. And I'm confident that my staff will continue to work together and be creative to do that. And then PCA just gave us a large donation for books for our vending machine, which if you don't know, our students of the month get a book and a sticker for their great work in drawing Bronco Pride. In February, we have conferences and preschool registration coming up. That's it.
Could I add just one more thing that if anybody's listening, or will listen later, that anybody that thinks they can sub, I know you've said this before, Missy, in your reports, anybody who thinks they can come and sub, please come and talk to Missy or Kevin or Tim. Okay, and so we did the COVID update too for Missy and Tim.
I just have a couple of things from Tim. So as far as, I apologize, my contact rolled my eye, so I got one good eye here. So current enrollment is at 5:30. That's down two students from last month, down 21 from a year ago at this time. And again, nothing, no, it's, it is what it is. Tim writes, we had our winter in-service day on Monday, January 17, yesterday. They had two presentations via Zoom. The morning presentation was the SEL program, Move This World. And the afternoon presenter was Jabaya Edmonds on cultural competency. I can't speak to you about that. I did not participate in those. I had other things going on. But Tim said the day went good, and so. Second quarter, semester one is done this Friday and half the year done. The high school's in the same position, both groups. And we are looking, you know, to, Missy and I, is where it started, and trying to get ideas of things that can get going, I'm going to say as soon as possible, whether it's tutoring after school, whether it's daycare, you know, activities. We have significant, if you remember, in this ESR money, okay? Significant money for, again, the terminology of outsider school learning loss, okay? And it is, the state's very specific. It's not just 100% educational. It can be some fun activities. It can be, you know, pretty much whatever you want, because those things support, there's learning in everything, but, you know, mind, body, it's all a piece of it now. So we are looking at, like I said, what we can do, which I'm, just like many districts, it's going to be different than what typically happens, because we have a significant pot of money. Where normally, when we just run a summer program, I'll be honest, we typically have to have 20 kids or more to make it pay. And typically, we run, and I'm just talking at the high school at least, for a, you know, 7th and 8th grade, you know, a credit course for kids that have failed. We run through the co-op, special ed co-op, service co-op, because they have a little different scale. And then they run the licensing, our teachers are hired through them. And it takes about 20 kids, give or take, to make it pay, you know? And again, we're not in it to make money, but it's hard to say we should lose 20,000, you know, to offer some summer course either. We're in a different spot here, because we have, we have 600,000, so to speak, to use over the next couple of years. Think about that, $600,000 for before-school, after-school, summer school, that's a lot of money. Because let's face it, we're not going to have 50% of our population. You see what I'm getting at? I mean, typically, we have two, three classes, activities. We're going to expand that, but we're going to have a lot of, you know, different opportunities, creative opportunities. I'm a little concerned about, you know, burnout. And that's why we're missing their group as well as Tim. I don't want, I mean, there's some people that will, you know, do whatever they can. They'll teach all summer. But you know what's going to happen? All of a sudden, if you don't get a break, don't get some time out. You know, there is such thing as burnout. Those are, you know, a lot of people are there stressed right now. So that's why we're trying to, hey, see, maybe it's teams. Maybe they teach for a month, then have the other two months to do whatever. Maybe they go week on, week off, you know, whatever. We're being creative. But it's going to be some educational, it's going to be, community ed has activities going on. They've done for several years, the camp, I can't think of the name. It's going to be offered, I think, again, probably free charge again this year, but because there's money available, there's going to be a variety of things, as well as swimming lessons and whatever else. And families are going to be able to, we think, piece things together. You know what I'm saying? Maybe you don't have to do it all, but you can do pieces based on. And it's going to be for a variety of ages. So both sides, both groups are looking, being creative, having conversations. Some things we hope to get going sooner rather than later. I will tell you, I will be bringing a recommendation to you to pay them at a different level. And I've had some conversations with the union, because again, we're just in a different spot. We're going to probably recommend paying them at their hourly wage, which is different for each person, but we can afford to do that for this goal round. But I wanted the union to be aware of, two years from now, three years from now, sorry, we're not going to be able to offer that. You know, we can do things, but it's going to go back to the way it was, running through the co-op, you know, co-op, because it's a, I'm going to say a modified wage, just the way it is. And so, you know, that's the downside, and I say this, you know, publicly, is you get something going and of course, families are going to go, hey, you've done this the last two years. Why won't you keep it going? Because the district might not have $150,000 to spend on summer program. You see what I'm getting at? Because most things, there's not going to be a charge. Swimming lessons, probably a different story. Yeah, you know, that's a community ed activity, there'll be some fee, but a lot of the stuff is going to be free.
Kevin, do you know if Tim or his team will or has connected with students at all? To ask what kind of things they might want? Like, I know that that wouldn't be the thrust of it, but like even just checking with kids about, you know, interesting ways to, they might have ideas, if I can say.
I don't know if they've, I don't know where they're getting, I know it's not all, like I say, they are looking at, you know, kids that need critical recovery, having some of that available. But they are also looking at, I'm going to say quote unquote, some fun activities. Whether, and again, not saying everything can be educational. I mean, if there's someone that's interested in doing a two-week, go and fish for two hours every morning. You know, you know, out at the park, we have money, you know, money can be used for transportation. They were talking about someone, and you can collect an idea, because you need people that are interested in doing it, doing a, I just can't think of, where they use the GPS and.
Oh, like treasure hunting.
Yeah, kind of geocaching or, you know, doing something like their gaming, same thing. Trying to find ideas. Hopefully, I'm guessing teachers are maybe asking, but I don't want to speak for Tim and the group. But they've been meeting with, and again, there's not a huge amount. But we got to make sure if we're going to put it forward, we have people that are willing to do it too. And again, not everyone, and I understand that, not everyone is going to be ready or want to. But I think it's exciting and, but again, just going to be honest, more on people's plate right now to be planning.
Is there any, is there any collaboration with the community to see if there's any expertise in the community?
I can't hear them.
Wondering if there's any collaboration with the community to see if there's any individuals that would want to, would be interested in teaching classes to bring in outside expertise.
I know. I guess I don't know about the parks specifically. I know they've been working and working with 4H to bring some of that in-house. Meaning it runs through 4H and community ed again together. But because they have, without reinventing the wheel, they have some programs that have been, I'm going to say, successful over the years. And it just, it's hopefully going to make it easier on families so that they don't have to go. I'm honest, my daughter did one a couple of times and you had to go over the back, is can we do it right in our facility? You know, so the parents don't have to, you know, move. I can't speak to, you know, if the park's been coordinated with or other agents, these are other groups. They're just trying to get ideas and, like I say, come up with some programs, again, for various ages. And realistically, moving through the next school year, we're looking at very possibly, I don't want this in the writing, but going 7 o'clock roughly to 5 or 5:30, having our building available. Some of it would be educational, some of it might be more of, you know, burn some energy off, have breakfast, you know, while the parents are dropped. Because again, we have these funds and it's making sure we have staff who are to do it. And the same with school's done. Yeah, part of the year, maybe some kid goes to basketball a couple of days a week, but maybe other times they go down and play board games or, you know, or maybe there's somewhere they, a couple of days a week, they can go work on their math or, you know, a variety of options. But again, looking down the road, what we can do, and the same at this level. You know, they're looking at some more tutoring, some more activity. There, someone asked about involving students. Tim's working on, I think it's on our society to see on like on Wednesdays, because we have the early out. Would it be possible to, you know, with a schedule, we have two, three kids that could come like in here, where we have staff and a pair or two, but we have kids. Let's say on our kids that could help them with math or, you know, for an hour or so. Or, you know, for an hour or so until, hey, teachers are done, but then activities usually begin too. And I think we'll have a normal, or teachers available. They're talking Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, I think, again, for some tutoring, extra help. But Wednesday was a thought. Kids want to stay around, why not? You know, and again, maybe hired or paid as a student.
Could we get any of that into Gazette early so that our community could start hearing about these good things?
Well, when the plans become finalized and are ready to go, definitely.
Well, what I'm wondering is, can we do it before that? Can we do that, somehow get some kind of a press release or something, saying we're talking? I mean, because I think sometimes parents need to hear it a number of times, a number of ways. I'm just.
Again, there's a report, this meeting tonight when we're done is getting shot to them, and we've, I think, had pretty decent coverage, that hopefully, a couple or two might come out that's having conversation about summer programming, before and after school. Is we get more things? Definitely. I mean, I think if, but I, you know, I don't want to say we're having a fishing club.
No, but if you say that we're discussing having summer programming with lots of, you know, activities, I mean, even if it went out to Facebook, Tony, if there was anything, I, I mean, what I'm saying is, can we give tentative things and yet advertise them as a tentative?
Just to get a conversation going, you mean, first and.
And then maybe you'd get more parents saying, oh, I'd like to see this kind of a thing, or I know someone who could probably teach that, or whatever. Okay. All right, so are you finished?
Okay, that's as far as kind of Tim, Missy, if I can just kind of jump into a few things. I don't have a ton of stuff. As far as dates go, okay, so we have the February 3rd, that we're going to be in the same exact spot. And Teamworks, barring something happening, they're going to be here to work with us as a board, as well as administration, and go through the first process. And again, I'm actually meeting with Rob tomorrow. We have a Zoom for an hour or so to give me a little more insight and allow us some PR stuff to start getting the public word out of what we're doing, as well as kind of get Tim, Missy and I working on getting a community group, start working on getting some community people in the loop for an upcoming meeting down the road. So that's February 3rd. From there, our next meeting will be the normal meeting on February 22nd, which is the Tuesday. Okay, January and February, the first Mondays are no goes. So just like this week, February 22nd will be, yeah, a Tuesday meeting, that'll be our normal meeting. I'm asking if we can do a February 28th working session for budget purposes. And again, there's going to be a couple of meetings that are extras here, and I understand everyone's not going to be maybe able to make everything. That would be a Monday night, 5:15, 5:30, whatever you would like.
Works for me. Likely doesn't.
That's fine for me.
Likely doesn't work for me, but if I can, I will be.
Okay. Let me just throw it out what I'm proposing. Then we would, we need a little bit of time from when we do some of that, so we're going to propose March 14th. March 7th, that first Monday, doesn't work for me, and that's, I'm just being selfish. I think I'm going to be gone. So we're going to propose, if we could, to have one more working session on March 14th. It's the second Monday.
Yeah, I can do that.
And then we would have our March 21st, first, our normal meeting. So in essence, the next two first Mondays would be gone, you know what I'm saying, in the month. So it'd be February 22nd, our normal Tuesday meeting. Then we do February 28th, March 14th. Those are working sessions, budget, things are presented, thrown ideas around, and then with the hope of March 21st kind of being our major budget decisions, if you will. And then if we have to, which I don't foresee, you know, reductions would, if there was something would take place in April, then, you know, take deals. So that's kind of the timeline. We okay? I mean.
5:15 at all of them, you think?
I, I would, well, like you said, not counting the February 3rd.
Right, that's 5:30.
Except if, everything else, I would say we go 5:15, because that's kind of our normal time now, unless someone.
Right, I think we should stick to one time.
I think so too.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
I want to make sure.
Yep, and we'll get them put on the, I don't know if you guys use the, well, it'll be on Board Book. And we'll get them built up on there.
22nd, 28th, 14th, and 21st.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, COVID numbers, and if you, I'm going to stop this, and give me a second, and I'm going to pull up a document, a little different than. Okay, just let me share this now, a second. Just give me this. What I, what I did here, just to give you a little bit more information to look at. This is our active positive cases as of 3:30 this afternoon. Okay, I've obviously taken the names off, because that's private information. And again, if any board member wants to get up and look, and again, I can share some of this, but I'm being a little careful on what we put out in print, so to speak, because again, names. But over here, for instance, Ms. Orms class has two kids, okay? And this is the piece that Leah and I, as well as our team, but mainly Leah and Randy and I, as well as Missy and Tim, look at more on a daily basis of looking at, you know, how many are in each spot, okay? The elementary is up to 42 cases, okay? They took a significant jump.
Oh, that is huge.
That is huge from the, you know, from the weekend, so to speak. The high school is still at 22, well, I shouldn't say still at, is at 22 cases. Staff that are positive is five, I think, as of this afternoon. So that number, not to say there aren't a few more kids out that are sick. We have done Ms. Pavlov's class, I'm just using them as an example. Leah and I had a conversation this weekend, because we got to actually five cases in that class. And not saying five is a perfect number, it's just, they're jumping. We got several that are at four, so we came to a conclusion, I think it was on Saturday, it might have been Sunday, that either every kid with any symptom is going to test, or they're out, you know, meaning if they have anything. You know, typically, you need two symptoms if they're minor. Any symptom you're out right now with them, and it's kind of the test to stay type deal, okay? And it's kind of the step we feel before saying the whole group is out, you know?
Is that where the, the parents don't have to sign for that then?
Well, there's nothing to sign. It's just, if a kid has a symptom, just say I had a minor symptom. I'm just going to say, you know, Ronnie knows, I might not typically have to be out. You're either out or you're testing to show negative with that group, because there were enough kids. And again, our goal is to keep, anyway, I just, I wanted to show you, there's, I mean, MXS3, again, not picking on any, Ms. Wynn's class has three, Ms. Wood's class has three, Ms. Moss had two, Mr. Zek has a couple. I mean, they're spread out. I did not go through and see, I'll be honest, if any class has none. There might be a, you know, a possibility or two, I mean, but majority of classes are affected. You know, we get down to the bottom, preschool is down further, just being honest. Then we get into the sixth, you know, sixth, seventh, and eighth have a lot more than the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. Don't ask me why, you know? You can make judgment calls as much as I can. And then down here is, you know, like the kindergarten and preschool. Eagle's class has one, Mason's has one, Ms. Morrison's class has three. Preschool, Levine's class has three, Ms. Walls has one, Ms. Perrin has one. It's being watched. There's not, if you, if you get my call, or if you heard, I was on the radio this morning, we are advising people to have plans in place, you know, whether your kid gets sick, has to be home, or a family member is sick and has to be home, or we get to the point where we have to do something. We want people ready. We're going to do everything we can right now, and again, I expect, you know, it's being recommended to keep, as long as we can keep staff, and you don't have, like I say, we're just blossoms, if that's the right word to say, to keep going. And right now, we have plenty of staff out. And we have people that are either AL for personal, BL for COVID, CL for other sicknesses, DL for, you know, whatever reason, and it is horrible right now, you know?
And when you say it's being recommended, you mean being recommended by what? By who?
By, by the Department of Health, by, you know, the different educational groups saying the best place for kids is in the building, you know, and if you, I mean, not saying at all costs. The easiest thing right now, easiest thing would be to say, let's send everyone home. Let's put everyone distance. No, I'm just saying, that would be the easiest thing to do. And it'd be the easiest for teachers to sit in front of the computer and teach to everyone at home. I mean, you know, and let's give this thing a month. Educationally, mentally, I'm going to say physically, you know, educationally, that isn't what the, you know, what we all think is the best. So we're going to keep going. I think we caught four kids today that, that have non-symptom testing families, that we caught four today that tested positive. I mean, it, but that's great. I mean, otherwise, they would have stuck around all day, the next several days. And again, I just keep encouraging people, you know, yeah, it's horrible for those families now to, you know, be quarantined, but it's good for the rest of the group, and good for the education of everyone else, and for activities to keep being able to go and whatever, so. But on the flip side, I'm just going to pick on elementary now. I don't know how much more we can do, you know, going like this before we're going to have some decisions, you know, of certain classes. Yeah, we had a three-day weekend, so we had, you know, a larger group of numbers, I think, today. But that's where we're at. And so, day in and day out is kind of, as Missy mentioned, creativity, how are we going to cover? What are we going to do? Thank anyone and everyone that is subbing, because we, you know, we need bodies. And I'm not saying it's perfect, but we're going to do what we can to keep, keep things going as long as we can. And hopefully, that is every day, you know, like, we don't have a plan. Several places that are in talks, at least this was last Thursday, there were a couple that were having staffing issues. They were looking at trying to shove 11th and 12th grade, maybe even 10th, 11th, and 12th down first, and take some of the specialists, push them into other places, meaning, you know, your math teachers would keep teaching their math electronically, social English, but take like your FIDE teacher, your computer teachers, some of those electives, if you will, say, hey, we're not doing those for the next two weeks. You know, if you have those classes, you have, you know, free time that, because shop class is tough to do. And taking those teachers and pushing them into the lower levels and saying, everybody, you know, you're going to be in a fifth-grade classroom, you know, doing X and Y. Not saying it's perfect, but that's what two of the groups in our region were looking at possibly doing. I don't know if they've gotten there yet or not, but it's something we've talked about as a team too, that if we have to go, you know, a larger group, that might be something we'd look at as well. I'm guaranteeing, but it could be.
Well, it seems like on the news that if we can get through these next two months, that it sounds like maybe we can, maybe things will get a little better after that. We really have to be creative the next few months, but there's, there's hope at the end of the tunnel.
I hope so, because two months seems, seems a long time right now, just to be honest. So anyway, that's where our numbers are. A couple of things I did want to mention to you, the, what I called.
Yes, yeah, oh, here, here. Just wanted to quick say that, I think, Kevin, you and I talked about it, but I think it's really important that we message right now. I mean, masks are more important than they've been. They always have been important, and I know that a lot of times it comes up, you know, when people are doing and going everywhere outside of school, and then they come into school, what's the point of the mask? Well, I think the mask is the point, to keep it from each other, especially when it's spreading the way that it is. So educating on value masks and high-quality masks are making a difference now too. They're saying there's evidence that cloth masks aren't doing much, but there are surgical masks, double masks, or higher-quality masks can make a difference. And for some, that can help people ride these two months out. It's not forever. It might sound like we always want masks forever, but we really are trying to protect the kids and I think, and the staff, and the community, wholeheartedly. So hopefully, those types of things, and distance where we can, when there's less kids in rooms, like, really, really re-practicing what we've heard so often that we almost don't even really listen to anymore, you know? So just wanted to point that out.
And there's no doubt, good, bad, or indifferent. I was over in the elementary doing an observation today, and just about every glass is much smaller than it normally is. You know, and I mean, I, you know, it's kind of a double-edged deal, but, I mean, it almost looked kind of like last year, when a certain large number were, you know, out doing distance learning, and some were choosing to be here, and it's kind of the way it appeared. And then, I mean, again, our number, when I say 42 cases, I think they had 90, 90-some out in, you know, mainly, you know, COVID-related, one way, shape, or form. I'd have to bring the number out. I had to up the graph, if you will, because 75 wasn't high enough. You know, so, I mean, yeah, there's a significant number out of the buildings, or the classrooms are smaller, which is going to kind of help us as well, and another argument to kind of staying in. And it's the same here. There's a larger number out. It's not as many as the elementary, but.
Right, even considering less group work, you know, just trying to be creative about spreading out where you can, that three to six feet might make a bigger difference right now. And so it might just help to.
I wanted to also ask, I don't know if right now is the time, but is there a way that we can help with distributing better quality masks, that through using ESR money? Can we purchase better quality masks for students and staff?
I mean, we have, we have, when kids walk in, I don't have, I'm going to say, or anyone walks in, those surgical masks are available to everyone, you know? I mean, if you want to require and not allow this, I guess you're going to have to make a stance that X, Y, or Z, but now keep in mind, you know, everyone likes a different, you know?
Right, but surgical masks, even now, from what I understand, that they're, they're leaning more towards N95s is what they're wanting people to wear, which are both this kind and that kind. I mean, those are N95, but it's just a thought, because I know that it seems like everything is just like a few steps behind too late, like, if you would have started just a little earlier, and that's what's happened all across the country and the world, but, so I'm just trying to be proactive.
I mean, it's going to come back to, and I guess I'm going to throw it out to what the board wants to do. If you want to require, you know, we never, you know, it was recommended not, you know, the Gators weren't the number-one recommendation. We did allow any type of face covering. You know, that's just what we chose, not to say we have to now. If you want to change what a requirement is. If you want to change what a requirement is, I guess...
What, can we just give out, if, when needed, can we have N95s on, available?
If we can get, I mean, that is another thing, you know, getting, you know, we have quite a few of the surgical, let's just call them, because we pre-ordered them, yeah. If you want an N95 or KN95, we're going to have to see what we can get, and, you know, if that's what you want, I guess we need to know and start going, you know, going down that road, because that, for the most part, is what we are putting out now. You know, we have a bunch of these that were, you know, donated, but they're sitting, kind of sitting dormant now, because...
The medical grade? Uh, no, I don't know, there's so many different masks out, I wouldn't be able to count it, but like, you know, even... What we have available, and again, education is a big source. I think, I mean, I think educating people on masking, like you're, just getting that word out there about what we know about more effective masks, and families can choose to do different things, and we can ask, you know, have what we have available, even suggest that they have a mask if they want to, and especially in more crowded areas, and being thoughtful about where and how kids are eating, and all those things that we know is higher-risk band, I guess.
Just so the groups are aware, CDC made the recommendation, I'm going to say, two, three weeks ago, it's taken some time to work through MDH, and kind of come through, I'm going to say, the Nurses Association, and into schools, but they did allow for a reduced, I'm going to say, isolation slash quarantine, depending on the situation, for five days, okay? At first, it was, thought it would not include schools. It has come out that it does include schools. Now, it is up to us to decide, obviously, where we want to go. They upfront with you, we have started to allow for staff a shortened quarantine. Now, there's a couple of reasons we feel comfortable doing that, again, the sign says, you know, the first two days are the most contagious. If you wear a mask properly, you know, fitted mask, don't eat, you know, like for lunch, you're by yourself, okay? We can control that with staff for the most part, you know, and I'm just going to use Bruce as an example. Bruce, you gotta wear your mask as an employee, we're letting you back after five days. Stay away from the students as much as you can, you know, space yourself. And I can trust that he wears a mask. I'll be honest, I don't catch many staff walking down the hall like this, you know. And so, we were comfortable doing the shortened quarantine. Now, we've struggled, and I'm talking Leah, myself, Tim, Missy, with opening it out to students. It is allowable to do it with students, but they're to mask at home if they're around anyone, well, how do you control that? They're also, at school, supposed to eat by themselves. I don't know how schools are doing that unless they would bring all the kids that are back on a shortened quarantine into, say, like, a room like this, spread them out, you know, because we don't have a separate room for twenty-five, thirty kids, you know. Staff, different story, they can eat in their room, or they can go to, you know, find a space to be by themselves. But I throw it out there, because the majority of schools around are doing it, okay? Esco, Hermantown, these are the ones on this call this morning, that everyone, we all gave what we're doing. Esco, Hermantown, St. Louis County, Mount Niren, Rancho, Duluth, they've all went to five-day shortened quarantine for both staff and students, okay? Ely is dealing with it tonight, Assentia is the one that recommended they go to five days for both. Like I say, we're stuck with the five and the ten, we haven't changed, you know, with the students. Grand Rapids and Aitken, they stayed with the ten for students, five for staff, at least as of nine o'clock this morning, or whatever. Little Fork is contemplating a seven-day for students, they just were undecided. Cook County's, they use the word debating it, what to do yet. So I, I wouldn't...
You know, I have a real problem, because here we've got numbers that are going higher, and then we're going less on our quarantine, makes, to me, makes absolutely no sense. Now, if you're going to have teachers that are going to come back after five days, I understand that sometimes we have to because of staffing, but then, to me, then should we at least follow the recommendation where more and more people are, again, even with medical-grade masks, more and more people are saying, you need thicker, you need an N95 or KN95. To me, I would think staff, if they come back after five days, they should at least be wearing that kind of a mask. And I think students, we should keep at the ten-day quarantine, especially with little kids, how do you keep them from being close to each other during lunchtime and that kind of thing? So that's my opinion.
And I'm not, I'm just throwing it out there for conversation, because these are our decisions. I mean, let's face it, we made a decision to mask where majority have it, okay? We want, numbers are high right now. I'm not saying, but on the flip side, the CDC changed this when numbers were going, you know, going up and up and up. So, I mean, I'm just throwing it out, we need a little bit of direction, I mean, we're making some choices, this and that, I guess I'm going to say, if you want it changed, we're going to need a little bit, like I say, we made a choice, if you don't want staff to have the shortened quarantine, we need to know, because we made that choice. We haven't done anything with students, because we're kind of, you know, hemming and hawing, to be honest, not quite sure, doesn't make, I agree, doesn't make a hundred percent sense, but on the other hand, I'm not saying, because everyone jumps off the cliff, we should all follow, but a good chunk of places are doing it.
I appreciate you finding all that information out, first of all, I understand, and I think everything is about a balance, right? I mean, we're trying to be scientifically, or as, I mean, nobody knows everything about any of this yet, I mean, it's all, we're, it's all transpiring, or evolving as, as everything transpires, so, and everybody wants a balance of not holding everybody up in their house, but also not making it so dangerous to lose so many more people. But obviously, whether, what we do makes a huge impact, so I, I think, I'm just telling my opinion, because you're asking for it, the, it sounds like the shortened quarantine is also to be considered with some symptoms, so if you're still feverish, or you're still coughing a lot, those things are not said, but I think we should say them out loud, because it matters, because that is another thing that you'd have to make sure families are being considered out if you shorten the quarantine for students, that they're also not coming back with fever, medicated fevers, and other things like that too. So there's more things to check on. I do think that the five-day for staff, with those stipulations of those being extra careful with eating and distancing, and I don't think it's a bad idea to have a package of KN95s, they're not that hard to get, and they can wear them for about a week if they're careful with them. And that does protect for those last five days, whether they want to go back to the other one, the, you know, a different mask, but that might be a really reasonable thing for the staff, for those five days that they come back before the ten days. And I thought it was smart, the way you did the student one for now, especially the way cases are rising, and we don't know vaccination, you know, again, we still don't have vaccination numbers for our student body, or, and I don't, haven't checked whether they are in the community, but that also kind of plays a role.
The only smart thing, keeping the students...
I think five and ten is a smart way...
The only plus that we talked about is what happens right now. I'm going to use myself as an example. Ava gets sick, we call into, you know, we, you know, we're homesick, Ava, you know, has symptoms, we'd like to get her tested, you know, whatever. Okay, when did her symptoms start? Friday, just say it's on Monday morning. Okay, you know, come in, test. If she's positive, it started Friday, if that was the day of her symptoms. The only thing we talked about is on this five-day quarantine, is if we did a shortened quarantine, it starts the day you test. We wondered if that would get families testing earlier. You see what I'm saying, it's just a thought, because a lot of people, I'll be honest, we've had people that, oh, symptoms started, you know, you know, six days ago, we tested three days ago, and it was positive, and we, you know, well, at least if we would, you know, we're just throwing it out, as, you know, that is the one plus we thought about, is, no, you don't get to say it started four days ago on a shortened quarantine, it starts the day you test. Wouldn't that actually help things and get people, and just throwing it out, that's only we can come up with, I shouldn't say only, that might be an argument for why we're doing this. I mean, most people have symptoms for a day or two, most, three, before they're getting, have been getting tested. Some are getting tested day one, you know, they woke up and the kids hacking, or something, or staff members hacking, but most are, and I could have brought that, if you noticed on the list, Leah's been putting the ones that are entered today, because I got to go through and do some stuff with them, but majority of them, the symptom was two, three, four days earlier, you know, so that was the only thought.
Well, if, if it happens on a weekend, then I think you could say that, you can ask, when did the symptoms start, and accept that it was three days, but if the symptoms started on a weekday, technically, they could be tested the very next morning in school. And so, you, they, then, I don't think it should be a shortened, because, I mean, to me, it doesn't make sense to shorten it to five, unless you're on a weekend and people are saying, I had three, he had, the child's...
But that's not a short, so that, that's just, that's the way the state has done reporting since day one, is...
Don't they still have home tests to take?
Yeah, they have home tests to take.
Can families get more tests if they run out?
We've been amortizing, you know, we have, now, we, I don't know if we have any more of the non-electronic, we might. You know, there were, the first batch was, I'm going to say, technology-free, the second batch the state gave us was required technology. We have another group of that same test, because that's what the state's offering on order. I did get an email today that said, it's going to be a couple more weeks, don't reorder them, they're, we're on the list. But we still have, I'm guessing, three hundred, you know, I'm just guessing...
How do they get more tests, and they call the school?
They call either office, both offices...
Just call and say, can I pick out more tests?
Yep.
Or send them home?
Okay.
That's a great reminder for that, because then anybody can test if you have them at home, and the federal government is giving every address an extra four tests.
Correct.
When they get here, I ordered mine today, they're pretty simple to order, but...
Let me put it this way, we're leaving it for time being, unless the group wants to, you know, have more conversation and direct us differently.
We're leaving it to what? The ten and ten?
No, the five, shortened quarantine for staff.
Five for staff, ten for students.
Okay, nothing's changing.
Unless, but you will buy N95 masks?
We're going to see if we can get some, but, I mean, do you want, I mean, do you want every kid, do you want to change the requirement?
Not kids, I mean, if, I'm talking about, if teachers come back at five days, I just think it would be a really good idea that teachers wore the N95 masks, at least for five days.
We can get them as quick as we can and make it a requirement. I mean, right now, we have staff back, you know, we've had this in place for a week, but I, I don't think we have them sitting on hand, I could be honest, I'm not going to send them home tomorrow morning, but we'll get them as quick as we can.
Well, how does everyone else feel?
I think it's a good idea. I can't queue them. I think the five and ten are the additional precautions of the spacing, and, you know, that, whether it's in any, if they're going to queue N95 masks, it's a good idea. I agree that the ten days for the kids is good, because there's too many pieces you just can't control.
Just got to give my mind to just about...
Do you need to mention the rec?
Rec what?
The joint powers update?
No, that, it was approved, and that's, that's in place. I'm just looking at my notes, make sure I have everything I wanted to touch on. We will keep, like I say, keep watching, if things go, and I'm going to say, what we feel is astray, we will be in the loop. I mean, if we decide and think the recommendation, not that we're going to have an emergency meeting, you've given us, you know, if we think we got a clause agreed, or a class, or whatever, you'll be in the loop when it happens. I mean, hopefully, and to be honest, we're going to try holding out for the most part as long as we can. And again, that does not mean at all cost, you know, I mean, if more than half of some class is gone, something's probably, you know, have happened. But the second piece, or the last piece that I have, Jen and I did have a conversation and talked about doing more, I'm going to say, more consistent messaging, getting things going out every day on, you know, desk practices, consistent, you know, whatever. I'm not against it, but I guess my, my struggle is, how are we going to do that? I mean, I don't know what time we talked, six-thirty to eight o'clock, whatever night it was, I mean, that's not atypical. Tim and Missy were there several nights last week, helping, doing different things, I mean, we've been, they've been helping with the cleaning, because we're short people. I just don't know where, I said, we can, you know, ask staff to come to get, I mean, someone's going to have to help. I mean, either that, or we got to stay another half an hour, forty, because it takes time. And I'm not saying, there is a lot of stuff we can steal, and that sounds bad, Department of Health has all kinds of messaging. Some of the stuff, if we want to make it more pertinent to us and what we're doing, it takes writing, it takes making, and it takes time. And again, I don't disagree, I have about that much marketing experience, where, yeah, you keep things in front of people until eventually, hey, I bought it, you know, type deal. I'm not saying that doesn't apply here, but on the flip side, people that aren't in favor of masks, I don't know how much putting in front of them, you know, is it bill to take to get them to buy it, you know, so to speak. And I guess I'm asking if, is a board that wants to help, I mean, if we're going to put in an hour a day, forty-five minutes, half hour, whatever, or spend some amount of time each week to get them all set and ready to go, we need help. I mean, again, I put messaging out, you know, on the calls each day, Leah's doing the elementary, because again, there are global calls or global messages to the different classes.
What can I help you say?
I'm just saying, if we want more, a message going out every day separate, you know, on, you know, the benefits of masking, the benefits of getting a vaccine, the, what I mean, you know, do this, or activities can stay, you know, in session, whatever constant messaging we want, more than what we're doing, I guess, either A, you got to instruct me, we're going to have to hire someone to do it. And I guess this, you know, is it, is that something we want, I mean, that we can do, but again, you know, how it is, it's kind of like, we're going to have to let them know what we want. Because if we hire someone to do school messaging in, you know, in support of good COVID procedures, someone's going to have to help them, and, you know, overwatch over them and make sure, doesn't matter where they come from, because hospital knows things different than we do, and the clinic, you know, and vice versa. I guess I'm asking, because it's a conversation we have, I mean...
Well, I mean, I think the sign that we have, if you keep saying, you know, wear thicker masks now, it's recommended to wear thicker masks, or whatever else we're doing. And I, I see more people wearing thicker masks now, and it's certainly matched up with the national news, saying people should wear thicker masks, better masks, N95s, and I see more people doing it. I think messaging through Facebook and through the sign, and on the website, and through Facebook pages are good.
And I think the thing that I would want to add, we were just visiting a little bit about this, it's, it's the right messaging and the targeted messaging, you can't just dump a whole bunch of messaging out there, because people will turn it out, but it is, you know, very succinct, very targeted, and, you know, so I think it's a combination of finding what that right message is, but then also, you know, I agree that you guys need help in terms of getting that out there, because everybody is spread so thin.
And so I guess that's where we're at, if we, I'm just saying, we as a group want more, I mean, yeah, you can tell me, get it done, you know, I don't know, one message, two messages, and I guess I'll get it done, you know, but I'm just telling you, I'm out of time too, you know, and I was in on Saturday for a chunk of time, you know, and so, and again, as we talked about, I hate to put it, and I'm not going to dump it on just Tim, or just Missy, or just Leah. We can ask for volunteers, I know where that's going to go. I mean, you might get one or two, because there's a certain group of people that will step up for anything, but they're spread thin doing.
Right, and I don't, I think part of that is, we don't want to create even more of a burnout for you or anybody else. And again, like, you know, I was saying to Emily too, is mental health too, you know, I know a lot of, if you're constantly talking about COVID, and constantly talking about those, not that it's negative to say all the things that you should be doing, but it really affects, at least personally, my mental health, as far as, that's all you're hearing constantly. And so I think, again, there's that balance, like Emily was saying, as to what we want to do, and maybe it's not a message every single day, but maybe it's a message once a week, or, you know, whatever it is that we decide that is that balance, and what that message is.
And again, like I say, I just, I'm, I'm stuck in the middle of what we want, and what, you know, because... And like I say, I'm just, I'm stuck in the middle of what we want and what, you know, because.
Well, I'll be happy to give you messages that, once a week, to put on your sign.
No, but again, it's creating and making that thing, too, because, I mean, I get stuff, I got Department of Health stuff coming out, you know, whatever you want to say, in favor of vaccine. I mean, if it says put one vaccination, you know, promote vaccination message, we'll pass one of those on. Yet, you know, I mean, if it's something you want specific and tailored, because we talked about making it purple and gold, making it look like it's, you know, Bronco message, that takes time. And it's going to take creation of it, and it's not just, hey, wear a thicker mask. I mean, it's going to have to be done right, you know, and look decent, and.
Who puts the stuff on the sign now?
A variety of people put things on the sign. Yeah, you're talking about sign out by the road? Yeah, a variety of, I mean, it's mainly either a secretary, I mean, I was, Tim Merinhoff for last year did a ton of it. There's three or four people that have access to the sign. And different people create things. Same with Facebook, there's limited, not every teacher has access, but a limited number of people that post things, some elementary, some high school. But it's, you know, what we want on, what message, and, you know, and what's.
I don't think that has to be fancy, myself.
And I just like to reference, the conversation was that last thing we were going up, what, exactly what you said, Emily, is like, what are some targeted things, keywords at key times? We talk about it in my work, but like, we're saying something that the teachers say to the kids, the coaches say to the kids, we're saying to the community, so that's kind of all the same. It's not, and it's in a real, just a bite size, like a sentence.
Right.
On a purple Facebook flyer. But it does, I totally agree to, for being out there, it does totally, it does take some time. And that was also my concern is not dumping it on you and the principals or Leah, not dumping it on people that are already worked out, not overloading. I think that's another good point. And there are messages to get out about mental health, about what we're talking to kids about through Lucas World or other things. And more isn't always better. It always needs to be, it's valuable to be targeted, which absolutely takes time. But I think as leaders, we have, as a school, we are a community leader. And so, I don't know if this, I don't know if the board, because as I said to Kevin, just because I bring up an idea, I don't expect it to take flay. But if the board has that value to, we've talked about PR or talked about communication over the years, to do that, we need to commit to something, whether it is just a person dedicated to that, and they talk to the principals and Leah and Kevin, you know, a short time each week, and they have some things lined up, or they pull, you know, the message from, or you talk to staff and say, what are their ideas, and not that you, in a meeting that they're already there for a few minutes, you know, they're not trying to dump more. But it requires a whole, but not just me making a suggestion or demand, or doing it in the, in the, in a moment of crisis when things are going up. But I think as a board, it takes the all of us to really consider, what do we want to do there? Should we do something now? Should we commit to doing something now? Or should we just do the best of what we have right now and keep going with that? But that's, I feel like that's a conversation we have to have as a board. It doesn't have to take a long time, but we've been talking about it on and off from here and there. And this is just a time when it's important, that messaging is important. That's where that conversation came from.
And teach me how to do the sign, and I'll help with the sign.
Well, we need the messaging, and it's not that easy as, you know, just doing sign. We need, the message needs to go to the sign, needs to go to the webpage, needs to go to Facebook. I mean, there may need to be a robo-call going out depending on what the message, you know, is. We need the message. We will get it, you know, the right people will get it put where it needs to go. I mean, I'll be honest, I'm not the quick person at making a Facebook post that looks, you know, working on it. I mean, mine are pretty, mine go through the webpage, the basic. There's some people that use, well, Ted, you did a session on it. What's that? I can't think of the thing most of the people use that make the, but anyway, it's learning how to do that. But if people have messages, and I guess like going, I say people, I'm just arbitrary, we need to plan because, yeah, Jen says, hey, I want one every day, and Joanna says, hey, we're putting three too many out, we're stuck in a bad spot, you know, copping them. So, without going on and on, if I'm willing to, if I just, we need to know what we want to do.
So, are we going to have a meeting about this, or are we just going to tie?
I guess there's a couple of people that want to come together and have a conversation and come up with.
I will.
I guess we need help, and then, yeah, it's more on, more on the plate, but we need to do what's, we need to do. So, I'll be available. Let's talk after so we come up. Last thing is, just so you're aware, we do have winter sports week going on. It's very, I'm going to say, limited compared to normal. I did just want to make you aware, we are doing a pep fest on Friday. It is limited to just 11th and 12th grade students. We have 11th grade on one side and 12th grade on the other, space them out. And we are allowing any varsity members of an app, I shouldn't say an app, but of an event to come down and participate because they are recognized. The other grades will, it'll be televised, and they can watch it throughout the building. So, it's not perfect as the choice, I guess, that we made and saying is the best thing we can do right now with the numbers where they're at. Unless you guys direct us differently, say absolutely no way, you know, it's hard to, I guess, you know, again, we're limited to two grades, and with the size of our grades, that's, you can spread out pretty good, and, you know, masks are on and that type of deal. And at least they get, I'm not going to say a normal pep fest, but, and, you know, court gets to get recognized, you know, crown the king and queen of, I think, the senior group or whatever they're doing. I haven't been in the planning, but that's, that's where we're going unless they strike us down or tell us differently. And I think it got moved, it was 7:00, I think it's going to 8:00 or something in the morning because there's a group or two leaving in the afternoon, and so that, trying to get them recognized and all, so. Sorry if I went off on.
Beth, do we have Beth still on?
Can we move her?
Oh, sorry, just.
Yes, I'm still on. I'm, I'll make it quick, you guys already have something written. A couple of things that I just want.
Sorry.
That's okay. Forage actually uses our facilities now. We are not busing kids over to Vakus. We do, we've partnered with them, I've met with her a couple of times. We have a class starting in February for the month. It's five weeks long, and it's going to be 4th grade and up for coding. And then, we have a Stoneville class that we're tentative re-planning, but we were kind of watching the COVID numbers. We kind of had a date, but I think we're going to hold off and try to probably do it as late as possible in the season just because we're worried about the COVID numbers. We are looking at a different curriculum for swim lessons. And Jacko and Lanu and I have been on Monday about that. And we have a dog and bee dance class that is starting. We'll run that early March. And water fitness is still popular. The month of February, we are going to extend our water adult swim until 8 o'clock. It ends about 7:30. And we're going to extend it to 8 o'clock because we are getting large numbers. And so, I talked to some of the ladies that are retired, and they're going to actually stagger it so that they'll come in later and let the ladies and the men that work, they can come in earlier, so we'll stagger it to keep our numbers down. I talked to lifeguards, and they were good with staying that extra half hour. Just a couple of other things, I've been busy organizing the community ed room 204. And as, once we get some more janitor help, I'm sure that that will be all cleaned up. The other thing is, is I was listening to a conversation about messaging, and you do have a staff member that did a great deal of training in messaging for five years, myself. So, I have a lot of tools in my toolbox for that, and I have been pretty, pretty well-trained on when to put messaging out and how to put it out and how to word it. So, I am offering that service. I did a lot of work with Montana Institute with a PNI grant, and I'm doing positive community arm. So, I am, I'm pretty, I'm pretty familiar with it and comfortable with it. And so, if you'd like me at the table, I would gladly come to the table and, and help with messaging. We do, in the DSC grant, we did write a little marketing position. It's about, it's a small one. JJ McBride is going to help us with marketing. So, we do have some help there that, like I said, if you would like me at the table, we do, we do have a little bit of resources that we can help with that. So, just let me know if you.
You're on the team. And there'll be a few others, and I, like I said, I'm willing to help, it's just, it takes, it takes effort. So, we're going to talk some more, a couple of us offline, and we'll be in touch.
Perfect. All right, that's it. That's all I'm going to speak tonight.
Oh, thank you. Sorry to keep you to the end and then.
Thank you. We got community ed? I mean, not community ed. Do we have anybody else?
Is it direct?
Direct?
I mean, tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, that's it?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'm going to come up. I got to get the board chair and the clerk's signature.
Okay, second.
Second.
Emily. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Pat, motion.